Good afternoon, everyone. Today is February the 9th, 2023, and this is our committee of the whole meeting. Record of attendance, Councillor Daniel Allen notified me that he was going to be absent today due to work commitments. Number two, land acknowledgement. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional lands of Acadia First Nations, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have any additions? Councillor Sherry Hurliburton, you have the floor.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Can we add ground search and rescue? Thank you. And I apologize.
No, that's quite all right. We'll add that under item 9.4, or sorry, 9.5. Ground search and rescue. No, my pen don't work. There it goes. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, then entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moved by Councillor Lauren Cushion, seconded by Councillor Sherry Hurliburton. Motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number five, if there's any declarations of conflict interest during any of the agenda items, please notify me and I'll make sure that your name is recorded in the meeting minutes. Item number six, presentations. We have with us today a bunch of people here, and Mr. Ron Cox is with us. He'd like to make a presentation to council. So if I could ask you to please come down, hit the red button on the microphone, and I'll turn the microphone on, and as soon as it comes on, the floor will be yours. There you go, Ron.
I think we're okay. Well, first, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to make this presentation today. I'll be quite brief, it's not going to take long. Basically, I have a question for all seven councillors. And what I've, I'm going to read the question, and you don't have to worry about writing it down or anything. I made up copies for everybody, so at the end of the meeting, I can give you, so each person will have their own personal copy. I'll read it, I'll read this to you. Basically, it says that healthcare is one of the biggest concerns of our local residents. During the last couple of years, many dedicated, qualified nurses and medical staff living in Yarmouth County communities have been dismissed because of their personal health decision, namely their choice not to be injected with a drug whose long-term effects are unknown and which is still undergoing clinical trials. My question is, do you support bringing these people back to work, and what steps are you willing to take to make this happen? So, some of you might be thinking, well, that sounds more like a provincial government issue. But I know each and every one of you, as councillors, have these people living in your communities, and you're concerned with all of your constituents. These people are without salary in some cases, they are struggling, they are trying to support families, they were without health benefits, they've been treated shabbily. I think over time, when some of these cases work their way through courts across the nation, it may take a while, it might be appeals, but it's going to be shown that these people had their basic rights trampled. And I've got another document attached to this point, which you may want to look at if you're thinking about this and not sure what you can do, like what phone calls you can make, who you can contact, who you can put pressure on, if you choose to support this. Of course, you can say, no, I like things the way they are. But the information on this document, the second document here, I can't find the words to explain it. I use the word shocking, but I'll let you decide when you glance over it. This information that's on here, the numbers are Nova Scotia Government numbers obtained through the Freedom of Information Act. And what you're going to find as you read through this is that it goes totally contrary to everything you've heard. How's that possible? You're going to look at this, it doesn't matter where you read or what sentence you pick, you're going to say, what? And yet, this is government, Nova Scotia Government information, their own figures. And the documentation is attached at the end. So I'll leave that to you to look at. Just remind you that these people that I'm talking about are people right from your own communities where you're living, and that you're responsible for, and they're probably likely to stay here. Some of them we've lost. I know we've, when all this happened, they either retired early or found other careers or moved, but most of them are still here, and they are needed like never before. You people, I'm sure, have families, you're aware of what's going on, the overcrowding, the working conditions, how the nurses are stretched to the limit. These are highly qualified, good people, willing to work, and yet they're being, what's the word? Treated badly, very badly. So I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to your response. There's enough room at the bottom to just quickly, it doesn't have to be anything fancy, just what you're willing to do, if anything, to put a little pressure on our Minister of Health, maybe our MLA, our mayor, our MP, whoever it is that you can talk to. Most of Canada's already done away with this. Nova Scotia's one of the few provinces that are still following this, and I don't know why. It doesn't make any sense, it has nothing to do with the science, so you can't use the follow-the-science argument. And when you read this article, you'll see all about the science. Okay? That's basically it, unless you have some questions for me.
I see the Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham, has a question, so.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Cox, for coming in. I will have to, Mr. Warden, you called for conflicts previously, but I didn't, I didn't know, wasn't aware of what the question was. And just to let everybody know, I do do work for the province. I'm on loan, so I won't be able to participate, unfortunately. I apologize for that, but I am in, I am in conflict on this issue because I'm a provincial employee.
But you could still support, I think, there would be nothing in conflict there supporting the right of a person to have their job back, is it?
Yeah, I, just because they're also my employer, I wouldn't, it's not wise for me.
Any other questions or comments from other council members? Councillor Sherry Hurliburton.
The only question I have, thank you for the presentation, and thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting, I'm assuming, Ron, in this. Do you have contact information, if you're giving that to us, how, if we follow up, how, do you want us to personally reply to you? Do you want us as a council?
I thought, I thought about that, and I was thinking, if you just left them here, if you have a mailbox or some kind of system?
Okay.
Because I live close by, so I can easily come in. And I didn't mention, I mean, I don't expect this, I mean, probably you could do it very, very quickly, but if you need a week or so to do it or gather your thoughts, that's no problem.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Councillor Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ron. A question for you is, what has been done to date by community to respond to your question?
I'm not aware, I'm just a private citizen. I'm not aware of all the things that have been done. I know that the Nova Scotia Government visited the area, they have been traveling across the province, and they're looking, I think they called their program Community Conversations or something like that. And a couple of weeks ago, they were in Yarmouth, and there was a lot of people at their meeting and were expressing thoughts on all kinds of issues, and this was one of them that came up, and then they moved on to other areas. So I know that was done. So the government, I think, is aware of this, I know they're aware of it, but what other things are going on, I don't know. I suspect all kinds of things, but this affects every citizen in Yarmouth County because everybody has to depend on the hospital at one time, doesn't have, matter what your age is, or what your conditions are, economic or whatever. So this should be near and dear to all of your hearts.
Any more questions, comments? I'll be the last, obviously, to speak. Thank you very much, Ron, for your presentation. It's good to see you, I haven't seen you since I was in high school, or seen you off and on. Who would, who would have thought that I would have been sitting up here in this position? But anyway, thank you very much for your presentation. You had mentioned that the province was going around and having a community conversation about healthcare, and during that time, I was actually planning to attend, but we had a council meeting that evening, and unfortunately, I couldn't go. But I did hear about some of the concerns that were brought up. For that information you have, you're more than welcome to walk around and pass one out individually. Council does know how to make decisions during a committee hall, we're just here for presentations and do the business. If anything was to come from council, it would come from our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll probably wait till the end of the meeting and then deliver, is that okay, if I do that?
We can just leave them.
You can just leave them with the clerk if you wish, we could be a wall here.
Okay.
You can stay and listen, you're more than welcome to listen.
Yeah, I enjoy the, I think there's seven there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. All right, item number seven, correspondence, 7.1, Correspondence for Action. We have from us the Yarmouth, huh? Lauren, can you get up and turn that mic off, please? All right, item 7.1.1, Yarmouth Hospital Foundation Annual Weekcare Radiothon. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we get this invitation every year from the foundation for this event, and council entertains a grant application every year from the foundation and makes an intentional contribution to the work of the foundation that way. And the practice in the past has been that we don't sponsor this event, but councillors have undertaken certain fun activities, like challenging each other, or offering to be on the radio, or some activities along those lines.
I will mention this, I was already contacted by the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation, and I will be going on air, time to be determined. Every year, I've gone on the Weekcare Yarmouth Radiothon for the past five, six years, I think I've been on consistently, so I already received the invitation, and I've accepted what I'm going to do there. TBA. Deputy Warden?
So, so the letter certainly reads, you know, would, would we want to enter into a sponsorship? So what are the sponsorship levels? Are we aware of that?
Yep.
Oh, they are there, yeah.
So they range from $5,000 to as low as $500, which would, you know, ordinarily be through the grant program. This is, exceeds what we would normally view as advertising.
Right, so, I mean, I think nothing's more important than healthcare, so I'll make a, I'll make, I'll move that Municipal District Yarmouth support at the $500 level, sort of entry level, a sponsorship, and those dollars will be applied against the, our 2023-24 grants.
That's a recommendation to committee hall, correct?
Recommendation to committee hall, yeah.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, seconded by Councillor Lauren Cushion. Discussion? Councillor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we know if the other two municipalities in our region contribute to this? We don't know.
Don't know. I do know that some, sometimes there's challenges issued. I issued a challenge last year, the year before, I was challenged.
Yeah, I do same, but.
Year before that, I think, yeah, I think you did it the first, two or three years ago, issued a challenge of this before I could get out there first, so.
Thank you.
Councillor Hurliburton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And follow up to Councillor Durkey, I think I saw the town of Yarmouth had theirs on their meeting either tonight or to, last night or tonight, that they were referring theirs to the grant application process as well, so, yeah. And like you, I've always accepted the challenge that somebody, I think normally the warden or whoever is first out of the gate puts out, so it is a great, you know, it is a great fundraising opportunity for them, and, you know, very important for our community, so I will be supporting personally. Thanks.
It just so happened last year where things were under COVID restrictions, and people couldn't, I ended up doing a video on two weeks before to start the challenge off quickly. Okay, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, Old Business, Request for Decision, the Cape Forshu Lookoff. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following from council's award of the contract to construct the two new viewing platforms at Cape Forshu to address accessibility issues, staff was asked to identify where the additional funding could come from. So before you is a request for decision that the Director of Finance gave to me and I have forwarded to you, indicating that the approximately $320,000 additional dollars for the project be funded out of the Capital Reserve Fund.
Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Right, given this is an important project, and we did receive significant amount of federal funding on the project, so certainly we didn't want to lose that. So I'll move the Municipal District Yarmouth fund the additional $320,000 of the Cape Forshu Lookoff construction costs from the Capital Reserve Fund, and I'll, that's a recommendation, of course, to the committee hall. To the council, sorry, yeah.
Motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Patty Durkey. Any discussion on that? I will say this much, I can't wait. It's, from my understanding, the project is already started?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm quite interested and excited to see another piece of that infrastructure and our master plan out there getting underway. Madam CEO? Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, 9.1, Absence of the Warden. This is just to notify council, and I better pull those dates up because I want to make sure they're right, that I will be absent from, if it would come up.
February 28th to?
No, not February 28th. I'll be back. I know when I'm going to be back, but I can't remember the date that I'm leaving, it's a Friday. I will be absent from March 17th until April the 1st. This is just for your record, so if something happens while I'm gone, all my duties and stuff will be transferred over to the Deputy Warden, or if he's absent, to designate a council. So this is just a heads up. Item 9.2, March Regular Council Date. It has no bearing on the absence of the warning, by the way. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that week in March, I have to be away to complete the last course, excuse me, required for emergency management certification, so I will have to be away. Our regular council meeting would be Wednesday that week, so I'm recommending that we have council on Monday, March 20th.
What is, which is the council? Councillor Sherry Hurliburton.
Put my mic on before I checked my calendar, sorry, because that's what I see all of my other, all the other councillors doing. I'll make a motion to move to recommend, to regular council the change in our council date to March 20th, same time. It's the evening one, right?
Yes, yes.
6:00 PM, 6:00 PM?
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Lauren Cushion. Any discussion on that motion to move to regular council? I will say this much, you all realize that's St. Patrick's Day.
March 20th? Seventeenth? I thought it was the 17th of March, it's St. Patrick's Day every year.
Must be U.S. St. Patrick's Day, Newfoundland and Labrador.
Where are you going to?
Just saying. Who has more fun than people, huh? All right, is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Here's one. Item 9.3, Request for Decision, Administration Building Debt Retirement. I remember before I was elected that this was a hot topic. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in, in 2008, the municipality issued long-term debt for the construction of this building that we're in now, and like most mortgages, there's, there was a term on it. And so the maturity of that ministerially-approved mortgage is this year. So in October of this year, council either has to issue a new long-term debt for the $1.6 million balance, or make a balloon payment and retire the debt. So in your request for decision, there's a discussion around the pros and cons of council's options, and the Director of Finance and myself had a, had a look at this and took a look at where we are with our reserves, and took a look at what's on your radar for the future, and some of the projects that you'd like to be part of, including more work in the Cape Forshu Master Plan, the Highway 3 Active Transportation Project, our Mariner Centre expansion, Lake Milo Active Transportation, and maybe some improvements with respect to the business park. So with all that in mind, recognizing that you may want debt ratio for some of those projects, the Director of Finance and I are recommending that we retire the debt, and we make the balloon payment of $1.6 million out of the operating reserves, and I have suggested a resolution for council's consideration.
Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Well, I think it's, this is a good idea for the reasons that you've, that you've certainly outlined, and, and again, the building was expensive, it's been a number of years, but it's always good to retire debt, and as you've indicated, the operating reserve is, is healthy, so it's, it makes sense, given the, given the increase in interest rates to, to get rid of that. We can make, we can put ourselves, I believe, in a better position by retiring the debt than, than not. So having said that, I'll make a recommendation to our next regularly-scheduled council meeting, that on the due date, council make a, make the balloon payment of $1.6 million, retiring the debt on the administration building, and that the payment be funded from the operating reserve. So, and, and again, the, the background on this would be, where is October 24th, 2023, $1.6 million will be outstanding to satisfy the current debenture on the administration building at 932 Hebron, sorry, 932 Highway 1, Hebron, Nova Scotia, and where is interest rates for the new debenture can be expected to be significantly higher than the most recent rate of 5.084%, given the Bank of Canada rate increases, and where is interest rates being paid on Modi's account is less than the Bank of Canada lending rates, and where is the municipality has several future capital projects which it would like to complete and that may require debt? I'll certainly move the resolution that I spoke to earlier.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Lauren Cushion. Any discussion on that? Councillor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just, I think it's a really kind of exciting moment and puts an end to something that maybe wasn't a very popular subject a number of years ago, so I put a lot of thought into it. I'm definitely in favor of doing this at this present time due to the interest rate or the upcoming expected lending rates, but at the same time, recognizing that it's been a difficult year for homeowners to pay their own significant, you know, the mortgages and increases on themselves, so we're not doing this blindly, but at the same time, looking out for our overall financial status. So I'll be voting in favor of this as well.
I have one question, since I see no microphones raising. I guess this is obviously directed to CEO, she may or may not know the answer. In the year October 24, 2023, at the end of this contract that we signed, the interest rate was 5.48%. Was there any, I'm sure there was work, but I don't know if you know the answer, was there any inquiry on what the interest rate would start at if we started into another long-term, I think the last one was 10 years?
Absolutely. So when the brief was being prepared for council, we reached out to the Municipal Finance Corporation, which, for the benefit of the public, is the only place where the municipality can take long-term debt, can't take long-term debt from a chartered bank, we have to borrow it from the Municipal Finance Corporation. So we did reach out and say, you know, if we were thinking about issuing another debenture for the balance, you know, what, what would, you know, you think the interest rates would look like? And they were non-committal, we couldn't get a number from them, which tells me the volatility is expected to continue, which is risk.
Absolutely, and the interest rate has been slowly rising over the past two years since, especially since the start of the pandemic, and we don't know where it's going.
Right, and so there's a connection between, you know, the Bank of Canada interest rates, but then everybody who needs, needs debt goes together to the market to buy debt, and they do it basically through the bond market. So we all know what our investments have done recently as well, and there's a lot of volatility there, so the risk for the municipality for another 10-year debentures is fairly significant with respect to interest rates.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 9.4, Request for Decision, the 2023 Tax Sale. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the tax sale process is a process the municipality goes through annually in order to reduce the accounts receivable on the books, and it's very prescriptive in terms of legislation and what properties qualify for tax sale, the due diligence that's required in order to prepare them for tax sale, and the ways in which they can be sold. One of the pieces that's required by legislation, unless there's approval by council to do otherwise, is to sell the properties for the outstanding taxes and interest and fees associated with preparing the property for sale. In some situations, those total amounts owing to the municipality don't make sense stacked up against the value of the property. So in this case, council, I am recommending a property to you, assessment account number, I'm missing the assessment account number.
Eight four eight zero five.
Oh, thank you. Yep, eight four eight zero five five nine. Has a total owing of $28,968.88, but the property's only assessed at $8,200. And so that's one of those situations where the municipality dealt with a dangerous and unsightly situation, plus the tax arrears and the interest. And so it's being recommended that council approve what we call an opening minimum bid on that of the assessed value of $8,200, and that's in an effort to retire it off of the accounts receivable books, return it to an owner who will pay the taxes and generate revenue for the municipality. The other piece of my request for decision today is around the second mechanism that council can use to sell properties through tax sale, and that's the tender process. So that's the process whereby the municipality would advertise properties for sale by tender, and that is a closed sealed bid. So individuals who would have an interest in the property would make a bid and seal it, and all of the bids would come in on a certain time. Council would review the bids, and they would make an award, and that's the process for that. In order to sell properties through that process, council has to give permission. The municipality has, from time to time, brought a list of properties to council and sought permission to sell them by tender. Recently, a best practice is developing in Nova Scotia whereby staff are asking council for permission to take the properties that are not sold at the live auction and automatically tender. take the properties that are not sold at the live auction and automatically tender them. And the reason for that is your title search information is fresh, you don't allow another tax cycle to occur, adding additional costs and interest to the property, and ideally, you're moving properties out of arrears and into current more effectively. So this would be new for council to give this permission in this way, basically saying after the sale in April, anything that you don't sell at the auction, you can automatically tender. But we are recommending that council give us permission to do that this time and see how it goes.
What is the wish as a council? Counselor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, CAO Brooks. I'll make a motion that we move to regular council, that we accept, council accepts, an opening bid of $8,200 on AAN 848-0559 at the 2023 tax sale. Would you like them all to be separate, or one, will one suffice?
One suffice.
Okay. And that on any unsold properly, properties, we call for tenders at the April 12th tax sale.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. Any discussion on that? Counselor Sherry Hurliburton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to CAO Brooks, could you just provide some clarity to me and to the public as to, and I know we can't go into the specifics of that particular file, but if the taxes haven't been paid since 2012, is it because it was illegal?
We've attempted to sell it before.
Okay.
But because the amount owing is so high compared to the value, there's been no interest.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, item 9.5, the addition, Ground Search and Rescue. Counselor Sherry Hurliburton, you asked to add this to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Make a motion to move to regular council, that the municipality send a letter to Ground Search and Rescue thanking them for the work that they did for us as a volunteer organization. We do fund them as part of our regular year, but I think a thank you note specific to that event that they helped us with a few weekends ago would be appropriate.
Motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Discussion on that? I will say this much, I'm very sure that the volunteer organization that helped us out during the flooding, they, actually, for the public's, public's information, they helped Remo with putting sandbags around a septic area, so we wouldn't have any pollution that would run into the light system during a flooding event. So they were on call, they were there right away, and absolutely, I'm full support of this motion. Any other comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 10, in camera, I need a motion to go into camera. Moved by Counselor Sherry Hurliburton, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushion to go in camera. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.